The government can end this scandal.
Just to be very brief, with a number of residents from Ossbury Village, some of them are here tonight, I thought I'd read out some of the things that they've said. This is Catherine. So we only learned that our lease had been sold when we asked if we needed permission off Countryside to build a laundry. At first they told us, yes, £200 we paid by bank transfer. Then we received a letter back telling us that we were being refunded the £200 as they now sold the first place leases on. We went into the showroom to ask the sales representative why we're not offered the lease, that it was sold to them. It's a living nightmare and eventually we applied to buy the lease sold and they were told it would cost £8,400 plus solicitors fees. Another resident, Jennifer, she said that she was dismissed when they were asking about the lease. They were dismissed saying that they could buy the lease themselves after they'd lived in the property for two years and that could cost between £2,000 and £3,000. And it wasn't until the email around 22nd month stage, Countryside finally got back to me. I must have sent around five to six emails. One day I got a response from an Andrew Love Day who subsequently advised me that E&amp;J Estate will be in touch as they are set to take over the lease from the two year stage. I was godsmacked and asked if I could buy the lease myself given the fact that I live in the property. Another resident sent a letter from their solicitor from Tusco, related to Tusco who bought the leasehold from Countryside. He said that the required fee has changed since the original time. The landlord has recently been selling freeholds at the site for around £9,000 to £9,500 plus costs of around £750. Another resident, Luke, said, my house has been on the market for six months now with no offers or any interest shown due to the lease and the clause and covenants attached to it. And finally, Sarah wrote to me and said, you know, we feel foolish for falling for this dream that has now become so worrying and stressful. I wanted this to set our children up when we were gone and now it's just one big expensive mess. Please help us. We don't want anything for free. We just want anyone who has a voice to get the developers to buy the leases back and let us get them for a reasonable price, no strings attached and easily done. And that is what we will do as a council, not like the Liberal Democrats unfortunately, who abandoned Ossbury residents 15 years ago. We will be there fighting with them to get the leases sold back so they can be sold on and dealt with in a reasonable way that they can afford.
Thank you all there, my honourable lecturers today. This is a crisis and I couldn't say a compliment to councillor Barry and councillor Parker for raising the issue today. In many senses, what's happened within two different sets of problems experienced by two different groups of leaseholders. First, the real scandal in terms of financial costs is the kind of issue that councillor Chris which has mentioned is where purchases of houses have been sold long, we sold interest and with ground rent of a relatively nominal but appears to be small amount at the beginning of sale with a covenant in their lease obligations that indicate an increase in that ground rent which appears relatively modest. Some of those people have been actually misled by the landlords, by the householder solicitors and they may like the opportunity of bringing a claim for compensation but in many cases they haven't been this way. But what's happened with this is that the developers have unscrupulously relied upon the fact that the way much compound interest works in over a longer period of time increases what looked like very small amounts of money in the first couple of years to very large amounts of money in future years. And then the developers have a business model where they know that that concealed income flow can get them additional cash over and above the sale price of the property because they sell on that right to receive the ground rent in future years. I'd say that is frankly a scandal which has blackened the reputation of construction and housing in this country. People often find themselves unable to sell their properties and effectively trapped in homes where they struggle to pay the ground rent and struggle to find a new purchaser because of the financial and growing obligations on which they have incurred. It is legal? It shouldn't be. This council should send a clear message to the government legislative chambers needing not just to help the future house purchasers but also those who are trapped in that position. I would agree, where we can, where we have a limited degree of control in terms of selling land ourselves and where we have householder partners, we should encourage them to not use this method themselves. I don't think we can, or a landlord or a neighbour knows better than I, whether it's possible, but if we can get monetary rings from new householders in the city to ensure they won't adopt this model in the meantime, then I think we ought to say that we would look more favouritively in partnership with those kind of people until government changes the law. Our ability to compel the change is very limited and that's why we desperately need the government to act.
Councillor Barry, do you want to speak now? Yeah, okay. Quick question.
My lord mayor, can I ask the members if the council consider one, two words addition, sorry, three words addition, and that is after leaseholds and shared ownership. Because actually, some of the people in shared ownerships where they have part ownership and part leasehold status actually suffer the worst of both worlds. They have had all the problems detailed consmo, but actually, they are actually legally far less protected than even leaseholders. So I would be most, I support the motion regardless, but I'm wondering if this council, whilst we are pursuing, should answer it back if you could calmly agree and share ownership of these holders because they suffer the worst of both worlds. Whilst you're considering that, my lord mayor, or members of my group consider that, will support the motion regardless, I would actually just point out, I think councillor Kemp's motion is helpful because Liverpool has a very high proportion of land ownership, more than many other councils, and it could influence our ability when we come to settle because as the chairman of planning has quite well pointed out, the council threw that in the planning process, but we could maybe look at it in part the condition of stable council land and council buildings. And I'll be actually upfront, when my colleague, the late councillor Morrison and I met the solicitors over a significant land site in Duxford, we insisted we would only support the pre-planning process if it was freehold sale, not leaseup sale. This is new. We as councillors, I think, have also made part when we are asked by developers of support applications, I think we should make it clear what we expect is right for the long term to create stable communities. I would ask very gratefully if on the first paragraph and shared ownership could be included. Thank you, my honourable mayor.
Councillor, we're sad to apologise. So a lot of people put their hands on for this.
I'm just sorry you stood up. Thank you. Congratulations to councillor Barry on that, on not just an excellent making speed for an excellent subject to bring to this council. And I hope that goes well for the future for you. And it's a really important subject and I should also give thanks to a couple of MPs on this. Mike Ainsbury, MP, Justin Maddes, MP, who have both had to lead the charge on some of this. It's worth pointing out, both ex-councillors as well, which may probably indicate something about them. I just wanted to add to some points that councillor Moore had made. We've had this discussion, myself and councillor Moore have also had the discussion with the mayor on some of these issues. If you look at some of the charges, the levy against people, just utterly ridiculous. £100 to get consent to have a pet, but if they come along to have a pet, they'll get £50 back. So that's £50 to find out you can't have sorters. You know, it's that, that's the kind of level that we're facing here. If you want a copy of your lease, £90, just to get a copy of it. Or if you want, and they must be using my little printers, you know, to get that, but to get a payment receipt by email, to just someone to email a payment receipt, £60. It's outrageous, the kind of charges that are levying on some people here. So it is right that we bring issues like this to this chamber. And so I would suggest that there are a couple of things that we probably could be getting on with as well as the motion that's there in front of us, the support call that councillor Moore's made for supporting the Shadow Secretary of State's call for formal mis-selling inquiry from the government. And then we can also look and see what our own trading standards can help with in terms of the information that we provide for people. I think certainly we can engage a lot better on this issue when developments come forward, notwithstanding some of the planning laws that are around that. But also things like dealing with those pension funds, and I welcome to us the close, dealing with those pension funds that are invested in these leasehold companies. Remember the perverse situation where the Nationwide Pension Fund invests in some of these leasehold companies whilst Nationwide itself refuses mortgages for those who have these leaseholds with onerous ground rent terms. It's utterly crackers. And then finally, I think there's one thing that we can certainly look at, and I hope cabinet of housing and the mayor consider this, is how we can bring together all the local authorities, certainly around the North West, to see how we can work together on such a campaign. But I welcome this coming forward to the council.
My honourable mayor, again, thanking councillors Barry and Connor for their contributions to that. It is an important subject. Support the motion, well put, asking people to reject the amendments. The reason why reject the amendments is because it's not other than politics being played. It's been explained to people that this is a national issue. It's an issue that central governments have to change. It's an issue that we have no power or authority over in a technical sense, in a legal sense, in the framework that we have to deal with. That's why it's important that we lobby, it's important that we push for legislation and for change. And that's why it's important that we reject the amendments. But let's be absolutely clear, let's be absolutely clear, that we were conned by people who have used our partnership with them to actually make sure and allow them to rip off people like the people in the state, like the novice creative in the state. And it is absolutely unforgivable. So my pledge to you, Alan Walker, and to you, councillor Pushnet, and to anybody else and to you, the people here, that I will insist and make sure that we have a conversation and a discussion with Countryside and anybody else to make sure that if they want to work with us in the future, they work with the people that they're supposed to represent and make sure that they change what they've done because it's a point, mind you, if you don't accept that, no, I won't give way.
I just want to...
No, I won't give way.
No, I won't give way.
And as far as I'm concerned, that's the power that we can use. That's what we will do working with our own legal teams here to make sure that we tell them we will not do business with you again if that's the way you've treated the people of this city.
Councillor Barry, do you want to respond?
Um, I mean, question, the thing that I would say is that the acceptance of this motion is a shine light on the Tory government and they have power to significantly alter the situation. So I encourage all members present to support the motion in its original form. Thank you.
My honourable 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 honourable
Okay, 12/4/63 against, no extensions, so that is lost. Councillor Barry, we're going to the motion now, but councillor Bradford is calling a request. Would you accept it?
No.
No. Okay, thank you for that. We're going now to the vote on the motion. So, all those in favour? That's you, Nambles. Thank you for that. Okay, as a matter of fact, UK Disability History Month and International Day, our councillor Pam Thomas, having invited councillor Thomas to move the motions under NLA and a shadow second. Can we be quiet, please? Councillor Thomas, thank you, my honourable mayor. Politics and the arts are intertwined. Those who are oppressed often express their experience through the arts. We see this in poetry, music, theatre, sport, satire and so on. Art can be uncomfortable, particularly for those who feel their power and control is being threatened, or those who do not want to confront their own ownin oppression. People often think, when I talk about disabled people, I mean only wheelchair users, or maybe people with mobility impairments. This is not the case. I'm talking about a very diverse group of people who have a variety of conditions which cause a range of personal limitations to the level and types of our activity, functions or appearance of our bodies, mind or senses. Disabled people may create art, about their medical conditions and the experience of medical intervention. Disabled people are in all communities, including race, sexuality, gender identification, age and so on, and so face different types of discrimination at the same time. We have much in common with older oppressed groups. We are underrepresented in employment, we endure bullying and hate crime, and like our LGBTQI friends, we can also be isolated from our own communities and families. We are a large group and our medical conditions are part of the normal diversity of the population. What makes us all one group of disabled people is that we encounter disabling barriers every day. This sets us apart. These barriers are cultural and societal. They are not caused by our medical conditions or our personal activity or functional limitations. Disabled barriers perpetuate through negative attitudes, which make it systems and practices which do not take us into account in our society which is designed by and for non-disabled people. In these times hostility, disabled people bear the brunt of hardship. We hear so much about puts to services having a devastating impact on disabled people, to the point where some die and have even taken their own lives. Where money is tight, it is the very things that enable disabled people to participate in society that non-disabled people often deem to be dispensable, thus exacerbating our situation. This is not just our welfare, but many systems and practices. Disabled people are excluded and isolated from so many of the things that non-disabled people take for granted in family, social and economic life. Instead of being alongside everyone else in education, employment, transport, housing, public spaces etc, we are physically excluded and at best are given second rate provision. Disability is not a single issue campaign because it is in everything. But, disabled people don't have special needs. We have the same needs as everyone else. Needs only become special because they are not taken into account in the first place. This perspective is the basis of disabled people's struggles for equality and is expressed through disability arts. Time and again, our issues are pushed off the agenda by those who are better placed to be received and considered more important. They do not allow our perspective to be heard, nor do they change their own practices to make sure we are included, so we remain outside of mainstream life. Non-disabled people's convenience often takes priority over our necessity. I'm very pleased that most of the travellers delivered inclusive design in the new train which is currently being shown at Life Street Station. And it's because of my position, my political position, which is very unusual for a disabled person, that I was able to inform the Transport Committee of the city region of the necessity to ensure that there's level access between the train and the platform. I was also instrumental in ensuring that new homes built through our housing partnership are built to the right hand of standards, but I'm still trying to get developers to do this on thoroughly through planning. Despite some practitioners claiming it cannot be done, team workers may do these things in reality. They will make a tremendous difference to many current and future disabled people, their families and friends. Neither would have happened if I had not put forward a disabled people's perspective that is often not heard or is ignored. Dodon Fest is holding an international festival continuing until the 8th of December. This does not get the same level of publicity or audience as other arts festivals, so I hope everyone is inspired to visit Dodon Fest's website and goes along to experience the disability arts. There are exhibitions in our central library, St George's Hall, the Bolsters of the Unity Theatre and much more. Dodon Fest International overlapped with Disability History Month and United Nations of Disabled People. My honourable mayor, disabled people are involved in a struggle to survive and yet we have so much to celebrate and reward them.
Thank you, my honourable mayor, and thank you to Pam for putting this really important motion forward. I'm so pleased that people have stayed in the chamber to listen to this because it is extremely important. So we're informed that they've actually created a cabinet position for inclusive and accessible cities, which Pam is doing a fantastic job in because, as she said in her speech, it is things that people do overlook, not that they don't think about it, not that they're not sympathetic to barriers that are in place, but sometimes, as Pam said, people just don't see them until they need to overcome those barriers themselves. And I think the important thing about this motion, and again, actually linking the motion to Disability History Month as well as International Day, is really important because Dodon Fest is an extremely important festival in the city's calendar. Not just important because of the quality of the arts and culture that people can go and see and experience within that festival, but also because of its international links, the international reach of Dodon Fest and actually the work that it does for this city is absolutely fantastic. And I'd like to place on record my thanks to Ruth Gould and the whole team for the fantastic work that they've done over the years in actually placing difficult on the map through their festival. So certainly it's not just something that we fund because we think it is a good thing to do, it's something that is extremely important to us as a city. And if people haven't been to any of the events, they're absolutely fantastic. I'd been here for many years and was delighted and honoured to actually launch the event a couple of weeks ago at the Unity Theatre and it was packed out and the international artists that they had are blown away by the reception that we actually do there in the city. And I think what's also great is the UK D8 this year will focus on disability and music and what great a place that for us to celebrate that in an arduous city of music and now that we've got a person in post who can work with Pam as well to showcase some of that work going forward within our events programme. So fantastic motion, Pam, and I think I know Pam does get round to all the cabinet members frequently, challenging us all the time about being inclusive, about actually making sure everything is accessible in attorney forms because one of the other things, there are so many hidden disabilities as well, that somebody's disability isn't always there on show and sometimes people need to be a lot more tolerant with people around them because certainly people are struggling on a day-to-day basis that you might not even know about. So please support the motion, as I'm sure you will.
Please, Councillor Barry and Ossbury, can...
It's just a point really on what councillor Simon said about... It's just a point really on what councillor Simon said about Daddad Fest and Ruth Gould. Ruth was at the remembrance service on Sunday, she's not available because she has a very severe illness, and I think it would be good on behalf of the whole council if you, Lord Mayor, write to her, say, or if you like, best wishes to her, but also to thank her for the work that you've done for Daddad Fest.
Thank you for that, Mary, and a little bit of a vote. All those in favour? None else.